Hear the voice of my ancestors calling me. I hear the sound of my ancestors' songs singing. Wake up, wake up, child. Wake up, wake up. Listen, 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 listen.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to our city council candidate forum today. Thank you so much for all of our candidates for being here today and also for being so supportive of our Palestine solidarity ballot measure. We really appreciate that. We're really excited to hear from you all today and get started. So my name is Mia Hadad, and I'll be moderating today along with Sarah Halawa right here. And we are some of the leaders for Somerville for Palestine, which is an interfaith, interracial, intergenerational community-led effort demanding a ceasefire and solidarity with Palestinians in their fight for liberation, self-determination, and human rights.
So for our agenda tonight, Mia will start us off with a little bit of grounding in Palestine and connecting the dots around occupation, apartheid, and genocide that we're witnessing livestreamed now today. Lucy will give us a little bit of context on our ballot question and the legalities around it. And then we will hear from candidates, a little bit introducing themselves so we can all get to know them a bit better and hear their thoughts on how we can put this ballot measure into practice. So we'll have a series of questions and hear from candidates. And then we'll close, and there'll be time for informal chatting as long as people are here and wanting to stay.
I do want to start by sharing a bit of my family's story. So I am Palestinian, and my maternal grandparents both had to flee with their families from the town of Yafa in Palestine during the Nakba. In Arabic, that is called the Nakba. In English, it means catastrophe. And that was in 1948. My family endured a lot of horror and violence and became refugees at the hands of Israel's occupation. They attempted to return home many, many times, but settlers had taken their homes over. While my family, to this day, still has the deeds to our home, we were never allowed to even step foot in them and take back our possessions, which are still literally sometimes hanging from the walls. There are pictures of my family members hanging in the walls today. My cousin went recently and saw all of that. So my grandfather died, never being able to return to see the Yafa orange groves his family shared with the world because Israel completely destroyed and decimated the land and the orange industry there. That was just one of the things they did so that Palestinian businesses could not flourish at the time. Instead of getting to follow in his family's treasured business, my grandfather carefully and lovingly peeled an orange every day after lunch until he died. While my grandmother has Alzheimer's, one of the only things she really vividly remembers -- it's really beautiful, she lights up every time -- is her home in Yafa. This is how important and how vital our land and our home is to us as Palestinians. And unfortunately, this story isn't really unique. Ask any Palestinian in this room. 750,000 Palestinians endured the Nakba, which essentially began over 76 years of the ethnic cleansing of Palestine. Since then, my people have endured unimaginable violence and oppression at the hands of Israel. The Palestinians who survived the Nakba and remained in Palestine are forced to survive apartheid, where they are treated as lesser on their land because they hold a Palestinian identification. They are hyper-surveilled, forced to go through checkpoints every day to get anywhere, unable to use certain roads or have certain freedoms, and are forced to endure extensive control over their even their basic resources like water or, in the case of Gaza, food. All while settlers continue to kick them out of their homes, burn their land, and make it impossible for them to live as free people. All of this now culminates in the horrific genocide that we are seeing livestreamed from Gaza. Just yesterday, I opened my phone to a young toddler whose parent could only feed her a quarter cup of water mixed with salt, the only thing that she could have to withstand starvation. I watched a young boy carrying flour get shot at by I O F soldiers, and I learned about the targeting of Majid al-Wazila School on Al-Jala Street in the west of Gaza City through a caption on a photo showing a toddler's arm in a bag. That was all that was left of them. I also watched a humanitarian worker break down after his pot of food ran out, and thousands of people were still crowded around waiting with empty arms. We are really seeing horror after horror every day in Gaza, and it seems like no one is stopping it. Palestinians in this room and everywhere around the world have been shouting from the rooftops about apartheid, occupation, and ethnic cleansing since 1948. All we have ever wanted is for people to hear us and to be in solidarity with us so that Palestine can be free. Even as we watch on our phones and even as it is so dehumanizing and unbearable, Palestinians in Gaza are filming their suffering every single day without fail and begging for us to speak up. A story I've been holding really dear to me lately is that of Enes Edşadif, an Al Jazeera journalist who was killed along with five other journalists after Israel targeted their tent. Enes was told he could leave Gaza with his family by Israel just the day before if he stopped reporting, and he refused. The next day, he was targeted and killed. I watched his videos every day, as I'm sure many of you had too. He always wanted the world to know what was happening to his people and never, ever wavered in his call to all of us, despite even having to read his family's names out loud after learning they had been killed while he was on air. Over 200 Palestinian journalists have been killed in the last two years just for being steadfast and sharing what is happening on the ground. All of that is in the hope that we, Americans, whose money fuels Israel's agenda, will be bold in our opposition to genocide and try to enact real lasting change in our political systems so that our own tax dollars stop going to companies that help further this oppression. Because we are witnessing the direct genocide and forced starvation of the Palestinians in Gaza, we have a mass movement in this country and across the globe now standing in explicit solidarity for Palestine in this moment. Even in Somerville, hundreds of community members, many of you, have really been out there uplifting voices of Palestinians and collecting and gathering signatures. And we've gathered over 8,000 now, which is so amazing. That means we've had over 8,000 conversations with Somerville residents who all fervently support the Palestine solidarity ballot question as it is written and want Somerville to act on it. So we're here today to speak with all of you, our candidates, to hear how you will hear the call of Palestinians and act in solidarity with them for justice in Palestine. So thanks for being here. And I will pass it to Sarah.
Thank you, Mia. I just want to thank Mia and all the Palestinians in the room for their emotional labor in these two years for teaching all of the rest of us about Palestine. We are so blessed to know and love Palestinians and have Palestinians trust us with their stories. And I really hope everybody recognizes that, what an honor it is. So before we get into our questions from our candidates, I'm going to pass the mic over to Lucy, a member of the Somerville for Palestine leadership team and a soon-to-be lawyer. Thank you, Lucy, for all of your efforts. One day, Lucy is going to be the best lawyer ever. Here we go.
So what is this campaign all about? Our 2025 Palestinian solidarity ballot initiative. First and foremost, it is a boycott and divestment ballot question. Most of you have probably heard those words before. They are economic pressure tactics used by justice movements. Boycotting is withholding one's purchasing power as a form of protest. And divestment is withholding one's investing power as a form of protest. They are, you know, they've been used to great effect by other movements, notably in the South African anti-apartheid movement. They've also been used by labor movements. You've probably heard the words fossil fuel divestment, things like that. And for the last 20 years, Palestinians have put out a call to the rest of the world to boycott and divest from entities that are complicit in Israel's apartheid occupation and, in the last two years, escalated genocide against the Palestinian people. Our ballot question is specific and explicit in its solidarity with Palestine, in contrast to sort of a more generalized humanitarian resolution in recognition of sort of the magnitude of this moment and this issue and also to honor the call of the Palestinian people for us to stand up and name them, to name Israel, and not to couch it or be in any way equivocal about who we're talking about here and what harm we're speaking on. The other thing is it's a non-binding ballot question. So this is an opportunity for the people of Somerville to have their voices heard and to put out a clear mandate to our elected leaders, but it doesn't automatically force any action upon passing. But we believe it'll send a strong and clear message to our leaders that if they want to represent their constituents, they need to act on this once it passes. And it reads, "Shall the mayor of Somerville and all Somerville elected leaders be instructed to end all current city business and prohibit future city investments and contracts with companies as long as such companies engage in business that sustains Israel's apartheid, genocide, and illegal occupation of Palestine?" When we name these companies, who are we talking about? I've got a couple of examples up here. The first is Hewlett-Packard Enterprises, or H P. You probably know them as a printer company. They're an information technology company based out of the United States. And they have a longstanding relationship with the Israeli government and the Israeli army to host the servers for the population registry, which keeps Palestinians under a system of apartheid. Palestinians are made to carry I D cards manufactured by H P at all times, which restrict their rights, subject them to martial law as opposed to civil law that Israelis live under. They're forced to pass through checkpoints, like the one in this photo, and generally have their rights oppressed through the hardware and I D cards that Hewlett-Packard manufactures. The second is Lockheed Martin, a weapons manufacturer, also an American company that created the bombs that are dropped indiscriminately on homes, schools, refugee camps, tents, all across Gaza. We've witnessed it happening over the past almost two years now. This is a photo of a man and child holding a bomb created by Lockheed Martin that fell in Gaza. And then finally, we have Caterpillar, or CAT. They're a construction and heavy machinery company. And they are notoriously bad actor involved in the occupation of the West Bank. Their machinery is used to bulldoze Palestinian homes and infrastructure, water cisterns, orchards, to build settler homes, to build roads that are only for Israelis and not for Palestinians. And they also have a contract with the Israeli military to create bulldozers that have machine guns mounted on them. The unfortunate truth is that we are complicit in all of those things. We have spent 1.7 million through the Somerville Public School System on H P contracts over the last 10 years. And under our current contracts, we are slated to spend several hundred thousand dollars more. The Somerville Media School Employee Pension Fund has over 1,200 shares in Lockheed Martin. We know Somerville tax dollars are going to Caterpillar through contractors, subcontractors. When you walk around Somerville and you see a construction site, there's Caterpillar equipment there. That's city money flowing to contractors that are then renting out Caterpillar equipment. So all pretty horrible truths, but something we need to come to grips with. And to end our material complicity, we need to pull our money out of these companies. So you might be wondering, is there a precedent for this in Somerville? And the short answer is yes, there very much is. So in 1988, Somerville joined the global call to boycott South Africa in protest of the apartheid regime there and was part of that successful movement. And then much more recently, in 2020, the city council passed an ordinance prohibiting contracts with companies that use prison labor. And that's been on the books for the past five years. So we know that our elected leaders have the ability to do this. They just need to have the will and the courage to do it so that Palestine is not the exception once again here. We need to take action. To emphasize this point even more, because there's been some misinformation going around, Somerville for Palestine has been proud to endorse Willie Burnley Jr., the mayoral candidate as the next mayor of Somerville. Unfortunately, two of the other mayoral candidates, incumbent Katiana Ballantyne and city councilor Jake Wilson, have refused to support the ballot question and have alleged that somehow the implementation of it would not be possible legally. And I just want to set the record straight here that there is no evidence to support this. There's actually a lot of evidence to refute this, not the least of which is the fact that that prison labor ordinance has been in full effect for five years in Somerville, has been implemented legally. There have been no lawsuits, no issues with that whatsoever. If you want to go to the next slide, the lawyer for the city, the deputy city solicitor, actually weighed in on boycott ordinance last November at the request of one of the city councilors. And it was his opinion and the opinion of the state attorney general's office that the ordinance had no conflict with mass general law whatsoever. And just a few weeks ago, Jake Wilson was up in front of the Union Square Neighborhood Council saying that there was absolutely no way he could support it or take action on it because it was against mass general law. Simply not true. This memo was circulated to the councilors, to the mayor. We know that they are using these excuses as a way to not take a real stand on this issue. But I just want to emphasize that despite, you know, the people that aren't in support of us, this campaign has been massively successful so far. We have 6,403 verified voter signatures on the books with the Somerville Elections Department. Yes. So, so exciting. That's completely due to the work of our amazing volunteer canvasser team. So, so fantastic. And if you haven't canvassed yet, get out there, it's really fun. And then finally, we are up to 30 local organizations that have endorsed this campaign, have come out in support of it. Just emphasizing once again in another way that this campaign has incredibly broad support across Somerville from all different corners, all different groups of different types. So the message is really clear, and we hope to make it even clearer, you know, at the ballot box this November when we pass this question. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions after the panel about anything that I said in the presentation. But now we'll go to the panel. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Lucy. We can get the letter from the city solicitor to everybody. We can get the previous resolutions to people if people need to see in writing what we're talking about here. Thank you so much, Lucy, for that presentation. So our first questions for the candidates, just to very briefly introduce yourself and tell us why you support the Palestinian solidarity ballot question. Is this a one-minute answer? Okay. And who would like to go first? I'll let people volunteer for this one to go first. And if they don't, I'm going to pass it to Ari. Unless there's a volunteer.
I will go.
We're going to all have a turn.
It's going to be, apologize in advance. It's going to be longer than one minute. I care a lot about this. So I want to introduce myself. First of all, thank you all for being here. I'm Ben Wheeler, a candidate for Somerville City Council at large, a technology educator, a housing advocate, and a proud member of our Jewish community. I want to start by acknowledging some things. First of all, I want to acknowledge the depth of the horror that has been unfolding in front of our eyes for years now in Gaza. I want to acknowledge the pain and the suffering of the Palestinian people, the children who are being starved, the parents who have to watch this happen. I'm a father of two children here in Somerville. I see fathers in Gaza having to see their children die. And sometimes they can't even bury their loved ones. And that's moved me to speak out in anguish and moved me to be here tonight. What's happening is unimaginable, and it pulls heart and the conscience of every one of us who isn't closed to the humanity of the Palestinian people. This is a Somerville issue because our tax dollars are paying for these weapons. This is a Somerville issue because all people, and especially all children, deserve to feel safe and secure wherever they call home, whether it's Palestine, or Israel, or Somerville. And this is a Somerville issue because this is a human issue. Thank you.
That was really good. Hi, I'm John Link. So I'm also running for city council at large. And I support this ballot measure because I believe that our city should not be complicit in human rights abuses. I mean, honestly, the stories that I was hearing from Mia, oh, my stuff, thank you, that was incredibly moving and meaningful to hear. And it really, to me, it just emphasizes so deeply how vital of an issue this is and how urgent of an issue this is. So, you know, Somerville has always been, as long as I've lived here, Somerville has always been a place that has residents with strong values and who lead with empathy and stand up to injustice. And this is just another instance of us needing to do that. We should stand with those, as we always have, when it comes to labor rights, tenants' rights, human rights, and opposing ICE in our city. Right? Our city has to be a place where we lead with our values. We have to continue that. And that is why I think it's incredibly important for our city to use all the tools that we have to do it, which are our investments, our contracts, and our political voice. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Ari Yakarino, running for at-large in Somerville. There are a couple easy reasons as to why I greatly support this ballot question. One, I've been to Palestinian refugee camps in Lebanon. It's definitely one of the saddest things. That just doesn't need to be there. Secondly, my brother-in-law and my niece and nephew are Palestinian. Just look, he looks so tired and so sad. All of his family's homes, they're gone in Palestine. It's all gone. So as a family member, I support him. This ballot measure is, you know, a no-brainer for me. But more deeply, and I guess in somewhat of a scary sense, the biggest Zionists are not necessarily Jewish people. It is actually white Christian nationalists. And we need to do everything possible as a community to stop the advancement of white Christian nationalism. And that's why I greatly support this ballot measure. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Mike Murray. I'm running for city council from Ward 7. So it's different than the at-large race. So, you know, with the genocide, the assault on Palestine, the displacement, and the starvation, it's easy to feel powerless. I've written to my representative several times. It's something I can do, but it doesn't necessarily feel like much. I'm sure I wasn't going to let this opportunity to do something pass me by because you just don't get many chances to do something that feels like it could be heard. And I think about, you know, I don't, this group doesn't need to hear this, but for those that aren't supporting the measure, it's tempting and easy to find something wrong with it. Maybe it could be a little different. But it's, again, you don't get many chances to help with a group. And if you have nitpicked something that you don't like about the measure and that's why you're not supporting it, I would encourage those people to interrogate themselves if that's really the reason why they would skip this opportunity. Also, I was just very, you know, activated and pulled in by Ramazaz Turk's abduction. You know, I have something of an attention diet of what I can pay attention to all over the world. And I do ignore some things. But then when something happens right in my backyard, by that same rule, I can't ignore it. And it ties us right through the national into the international right to Gaza because, of course, she was speaking up and speaking up for Palestinians. So thanks for having me here. And pass on the mic.
Thank you, Ben. Hi, my name is Tuesday. And I actually have laryngitis right now. I'm running for council at large, but I really just came to support this movement. I have a moral and political commitment that guides me. That's the reason I'm here. I recognize what's going on in Palestine. And I understand that it's being backed by U.S. politics and U.S. dollars. And I don't want to see that happen. I'm very much in support of this initiative and the ballot. And if it passes, I will take it as a mandate, if elected, that this is the power of the people and we need to do whatever we can to boycott, to divest, and maybe even get involved in some sanctions if we can.
Thank you so much. Our next question is going to come from Kamo. I've grown up in Massachusetts. I am a Muslim living here. Massachusetts is my home. Somerville is now my city. And I've found a home here in Somerville for Palestine. I've been out canvassing since April. And as you've heard, we've collected over 8,000 signatures from Somerville voters in support of our Palestinian solidarity question. 6,500 have already been certified. So what I'm saying is we're confident that this question will be on the ballot in November. Based on the support we're seeing, we believe the people are with Palestine. Resolutions and ordinances to boycott and divest from Israel's apartheid and genocide and occupation of Palestine are popping up all over the country. This Portland, Belfast, Dearborn, Michigan, Hamtrack, Richmond, Hayward countries in California, and most recently Iowa City. And now with Lucy's presentation, we know that there is a path forward for this ordinance. So if Somerville votes to pass the Palestinian solidarity ballot measure, what will you do to put it into action, especially considering that we have mayoral candidates that might oppose that?
So I have said many times, I would have liked to see different language in this initiative. I really support getting the biggest tent of the most supporters that we can. And Medford is taking a slightly different approach. Their latest ordinance articulates more broad terms and creates what I think is a sustainable approach to divestment, one that I think would be broadly popular here. I think there's something to be said for going in a direction that gets more people on board and that also is able to send a message, I think still a powerful one. To more directly answer your question, even though this language is not the precise language that I would have ideally preferred, I deeply support this initiative. And I would act in good faith in office to implement it if it passes. I'd work with the city solicitor to find the most legally viable path, such as procurement guidelines to incorporate human rights standards that then could be applied in this case. I see my time's up. There's some other things I would do, but I'll pass the mic. Thank you.
All right. So I guess the first thing that I would like to see put in action, I'd written down here kind of, actually, something kind of in the same vein of the Medford, you know, resolution where we're, you know, boycotting, divesting from fossil fuels, prisons, weapon companies. But hearing some of the reason that we're specifically in this resolution, the ballot measure, rather, naming and making it very specific, I guess I want to think more about that exactly, what I would want to do there. I certainly see the appeal to what Ben has mentioned. I think having an opportunity to use that. Oh, I'm going to have to hurry up. Anyway, I want to think more about that exactly. But I do want to see it put into action, I guess. So secondly, I want to make sure that we're ready for compliance. Holy moly. And third, transparency and oversight. We got to have reporting. Okay, thank you.
From day one, I would be doing that. I would like to bring in volunteers from Somerville for Palestine to help with the auditing process. You guys have been putting in the work. It'd be nice to see you continue putting in that work. I'd like to make it a public audit that people can very publicly see and be a part of. If we are coming up on, or if there's a way to terminate contracts without us getting financially blown out of the water, I would be looking at that as well. And if, you know, I would like to redirect any potential money we have into local businesses rather than rather than Israel, which is taking too much of our money to begin with in many other ways. That's what I would do.
You know, I'm thinking about this. This is the train that's coming. There's not another train coming before the election, and this is a good one. And I'm really happy to hop on with it and to support it. And, you know, as far as the legal parts of it, I sometimes I think we, in all respect for you, you know, training from a lawyer, since we exalt lawyers as if they can understand things others cannot understand. And I looked up the language. I asked Jake, I said, Jake, what are you talking about? Can you point to what you're talking about? And he pointed to this section. I'm going to read it. "The procurement officer shall evaluate a bid based solely on the requirements and criteria set forth in the invitation for bids. Such criteria shall include the standards by which procurement officer will determine acceptability as to quality, workmanship, results of inspections and tests, and suitability for a particular purpose." Anyways, the point being that it's not what Jake said, it's whatever was in the invitation to bid. So you can adjust the invitation to bid to fit what you want.
It's going to be a hurdle for anyone who is a councilor at large. I think that we really have to work closely with them, and I think pulling in some of the Somerville for Palestine people, definitely reviewing the contracts and looking at what we can do. I have a financial background, and I worked in the financial industry, and I think that it may be a matter of just, I think the bids are out there. We might be able to find something that's a little more cost-effective and maybe entice and use that as a bargaining chip to say, we can get away from these companies and go towards someone else who's a little more cost-effective. All right, that's it for me. Thanks.
Some of you mentioned this idea of maybe passing like some sort of humanitarian resolution or wanting the language to be a little bit more broad in that way. And I just want to comment a little bit on that and why our approach specifically is on centering Palestine. So to give some context, I am actually one of the people who was involved with writing the question. And we really spent like many, many, many months drafting this language, working with our Palestinian leaders, working with our Swana leaders, our Jewish caucus, our BDS leaders, and even speaking to some of our current city councillors just to kind of craft the ballot measure language specifically in a way that we think is extremely intentional, precise, and directly aligns with what we as Palestinians have been calling for in the movement for justice in Palestine. So while we as Somerville for Palestine absolutely, absolutely support and want to further the collective liberation of all people, and we fully understand the sentiment behind a humanitarian resolution being a little bit easier to pass maybe or whatnot, we really believe that this might enable candidates to hide behind a little bit of a vague humanitarian gesture and dilutes the importance of naming Palestine. To pass any resolution or policy that doesn't explicitly name Palestine as the oppressed group and doesn't name Israel as the entity which is responsible for genocide, apartheid, and occupation of Palestine doesn't actually protect Palestinians and erases the struggle that we have, as Palestinians, have endured for decades. It also really invalidates the tireless efforts of everyone here in this room and every one of those 8,000-plus people in Somerville who have read our question and support the language so holy as it is. We really reject this idea of being progressive except on the issue of Palestine. We believe our city council candidates, yes, we believe our city council candidates must be willing to speak up about Palestine, name Palestine specifically, and hold accountable those that are perpetrating these crimes against Palestinians. Anything less is silent condoning, and anything less is erasure. When we name this genocide so specifically and we take action against it, we make it ever so clear, not just to us and everyone in the room and everyone in Somerville, but to everyone in Massachusetts and around the country, that what Israel is doing is wrong. And what we ensure that our communities across the country and around the world really feel empowered and emboldened to speak out for Palestine, which moves the needle forward on liberating Palestine. That's how we make change last, and that is important instead of, you know, offering some more vague gestures. So to my kind of follow-up question here, if you are elected, will you commit to ensuring that Palestine is named in any humanitarian policy or resolution if one is pursued, and that Israel's crimes are named explicitly as the reason for the oppression of Palestine? Anybody want to start?
Yes. Yeah, 100%. Yes, definitely.
My answer is no. I hear all those reasons, and I feel their importance. And in a deliberative body, it might be that the way to get to a resolution with a majority of votes saying yes is to articulate general principles and then to apply them and to show how they are being violated in the case of the oppression of the Palestinian people.
Yeah, I struggled with some of these questions in the questionnaire as well a few months back. Like, I am somebody who gets pretty specific with language. You can see, you know, reading the original law as well. And the question is, will I ensure that Palestine and Palestinians are named as the victims, as the, those being aggressed against, and Israel is named as the aggressor in any resolution? The resolution that's passed, picking up on the work of this, yes.
I think I'm with Ben on this. I think that it's important that it doesn't, as important as it is to name the oppressed, I think it's also important. I can't, you know, this is hard enough as it is with me, but I think it's important to like call out exactly what we're, what the problem is. So I think that identifying what the issue is and what the problems are, I don't know if we necessarily have to say Palestine and Israel. I don't think we're hiding anything, but I think maybe people might find it even more easy to identify what's wrong and right rather than by naming who it is that's making, doing the wrong and the right. Does that make sense?
It doesn't, but that's the answer.
I'm sorry.
I understand what you are saying, but I think the people who have been working very hard to collect signatures for a very specific ballot measure in a moment that we are witnessing live-streamed genocide cannot accept the answer that we can't name this genocide, you can't name this apartheid, you can't name who it's against, the Palestinian people trapped in Gaza, and you can't name the people who are committing it, which is the state of Israel. So I just want to invite those who think that they cannot commit to name the atrocities committed by the state of Israel and the people of Palestine to reflect a little bit on why they feel they have to erase Palestine in this moment where we are witnessing live-streamed genocide. We're going to move into our next question now. Our next question is about anti-Palestinian hate, and I'm going to be asking it. My name is Sarah Halawa. I am, I was raised Muslim, but my family is, I'm descended from Jews. My two grandparents were Jewish, but I was raised Muslim. My husband's family, Jamal, who's here today, is from Nablus, Palestine. It is known for the oldest soap factory in the world, as well as the delicious sweet konafa that the Halawas make. Sweetest family. Nablus has been illegally occupied under international law. That's not my opinion. That is international law since 1967. And my father-in-law was brutalized as a teenager. He was terrorized and tortured by the IDF. Pretty much every Palestinian you will meet has a story of personal brutality at the hands of Israel, directly or directly to their family. Every single Palestinian you will meet, that is true for. Since the fall of 2023, while we've been witnessing dehumanization and violence waged against Palestinian bodies every day in Palestine, violence against Palestinians in the US is also spiked. In my father-in-law's current neighborhood outside of Chicago, in the fall, in November, maybe it was October of 2023, a six-year-old boy named Wadia was stabbed to death in his home by a neighbor. Up in Burlington, Vermont, three Palestinian college students were shot on the street in Burlington, Vermont, our backyard. And here in Somerville, incidents of anti-Palestinian hate have increased as well. And so I'm going to share a few that our family has personally experienced because some people have, maybe they don't know, or maybe they don't care. So we have been speaking out very publicly. I forgot to mention, so back in September of 2023, a Palestinian professor at Tufts received graphic Islamophobic and sexually violent cartoons slipped under her office door. Did we hear about that? Did Tufts condemn that violence? No, nothing was done. So then this same member lost 12 members of her family in Gaza in the past three weeks. We've been raising money through our mutual aid to support her family members in North Gaza. Another Palestinian member of our community who was faculty at Harvard lost her job for being Palestinian and amplifying Palestinian voices in her work. She's a Somerville for Palestine member. In November of 23, Jamal, who's a teacher at Somerville High, went to testify at the school committee about the school leader's silence as Somerville High students were witnessing live-streamed genocide on their phone and looking for leaders to say something, anything. 10 seconds into his testimony, then school committee chair Alana Kreptchen turned off his mic, literally silencing him. My then-11-year-old stepdaughter, Muna, who's here tonight, sixth grade, had to walk past Fuck Gaza, graffiti-ed on her walk to school. Jamal, another Arab city employee of Somerville and a Hijabi high school student, went and began one of the most beautiful things that we do in Somerville, which is a daily ceasefire standout in front of Somerville High. The first day that they stood out, a driver rolled down his window, screamed violent profanities, racist threats against them, like threats of violence directly at them. And day after day, he drove by and did the same thing for over a month until he made threats of sexual violence against their wives. And then we had been reporting it to school leaders, to the mayor, to the racial and social, to everybody. And it wasn't until we put the video on Instagram that any action was taken. For a month, against high school students. After Israel's pager attack in Lebanon killed over 30 people, including multiple children, my first grader, who was learning to read, excitedly pointed out stickers that said Palestine on them in our neighborhood. Looking more closely at them, I realized somebody had put pagers for Palestine stickers up and down our block and around our neighborhood. This was reported to the police. It was investigated as a hate crime. School committee member Lyron Biton called Somerville High students to be, called for Somerville High students to be disciplined for their pro-Palestine, anti-genocide activism, and likened them to white nationalists. Actual white nationalists came and harassed us as we were going to testify at school committee. Scott Hayes, who shot somebody in Newton later, and Eli Davidian, who is a right-wing, pro-Israel agitator. They harassed us by screaming through megaphones at close range, including into my 19-year-old stepdaughter's face, "Do you love rape? Do you love raping Jews?" repeatedly, rape supporter, rape supporter, rape supporter, into our faces. And you know what? The Somerville police were standing there witnessing it. At our last day of school standout, where it was beautiful, one of our families who holds it down baked scones with homemade lemon curd to put on top of them. We all brought our children to celebrate the end of school. Ellie Davidian, who drove here from Beverly, he must have woke up at 6:30, came and started harassing us. He got into verbal altercations. They swore at students coming to school, and he ended up charging at Jamal and jamming him in the chest with two flag bowls while screaming profanities. When Jamal moved him off of us, this was in front of all of my young children, when he was moved away from us, he called the police and said he had been assaulted. The police pressed felony charges against Jamal, which were later jockeyed when video evidence was produced. This is all anti-Palestinian hate right here in Somerville. The racial and social justice department, the Human Rights Commission, two commissioners who are running for council now both oppose this ballot measure. They did nothing to address anti-Palestinian hate right here in Somerville. But what we've also witnessed is that the system of supremacy that oppresses Palestinians in Palestine and in Somerville also mobilizes against people using their voice for Palestine. And the people who are targeted the most are the most vulnerable members of our population, so immigrants, black and brown people, Muslims, queer and trans people. In late 2023, Hijabi friends of mine were afraid to leave their homes. They weren't wrong. Ramazeh Aztark was literally abducted from the streets of Somerville by ICE. She thought they were going to kill her. In late... But what I also found very interesting is the two other co-authors of Ramazeh's Aztark's BDS piece, they just self-deported because nobody in Somerville could stand up and actually protect them. They just said, it's probably better to leave than to be tortured the way she's being tortured. Right here in Somerville, right. So I just will end by saying, many, many, many of our canvassers have been harassed by pro-genocide supporters, pro-Israel supporters. I'd invite people to raise your hand if you've experienced harassment out on the canvas or harassment for your pro-Palestinian speech. We have members who've been doxxed, threatening phone calls to their parents and family members. We have members who've been doxxed, threatening phone calls to their work. We have members who, two weeks ago at a rally, I'm sorry, there's a lot. In Harvard, in Harvard Square, pro-Israel agitators screamed death threats at a standout. Many of our members were there, and he even got out of his car and wielded an axe at them. Again, police watched. And also, we have a group of runners for Justice in Palestine who go and do this beautiful run every Sunday morning. And just two weeks ago, an unhinged, pro-genocide, pro-Israel person swung his electric scooter at people, shoved people, screamed at people, and even punched somebody in the head. So there are so many incidents of anti-Palestinian hate right here in Somerville. What do we want our city leaders to do? We want them to reach out to victims, to people who are being harassed, and ask them how they can support them. We want a public acknowledgement and public condemnations of anti-Palestinian hate. We want city-led public events uplifting Palestinian voices, teach-ins on anti-Palestinian hate, outreach to the perpetrators, letting them know it's not tolerated, it's not acceptable behavior. You can disagree with the ballot measure, you don't have to sign, you can move along. It's unacceptable to harass people and threaten them. We're open to creative solutions. So here is our next question. What will you do as a public figure in our city to address anti-Palestinian hate, uplift and protect Palestinians, and those in Somerville speaking up for Palestinian liberation?
I'm a marketing and PR guy. That's kind of my background. And what you said earlier was important. Once it gets to video and out into the public, that's when things actually happen at the governmental level. I did that where I live at Mystic Valley Parkway in Boston Ave. DCR didn't install a left-on-green arrow and no right-on-red there for decades. I witnessed 30 car crashes in two years, took pictures of all the car crashes, sent them to the Globe. Globe did a story. Ta-da, DCR was out there and finally installed the green left arrows, no rights on red, right? So you're exactly right that there needs to be media. If I am elected, I will work with Somerville for Palestine to make sure that your stories actually reach Cambridge Day, Somerville Times, the Globe, and other media sources. I would also like to, I would like to know, and I'm familiar with, what kind of intelligence services we have at our disposal to identify early threats of Palestinian bias and hatred. In addition to that, to the legal sense we are able to, I'd like to have a publicly available list of offenders. And I think we should eventually have a persona non grata. We should bring that back as well and have people be persona non grata in the city of Somerville.
That list was truly horrifying, and there's a lot that I wasn't aware of, of the depth of those incidents. I think one element of leadership of everybody working for the city, everybody in elected office, is to speak often and clearly that that sort of harassment and threat-making and interference with people's rights to be safe and to speak and use their free speech in day-to-day life have no place in Somerville. in day-to-day life have no place in Somerville. I think that's something that people with a big microphone need to say often. And they need to specifically name the forms of hate that are happening. And say, people who are advocating for Palestinian rights need to be free from that sort of fear in Somerville every day. I'm so sorry to hear that the Department of Racial and Social Justice has not been more responsive. I would like to see greater resources devoted on the city level towards investigating and making transparent lists of hate crimes and their outcomes. That's something that I would presume would make sense to do through the RSJ. And it's troubling to hear that that has not been a more responsive venue for you.
All right. So I guess first, I would want to make sure that we are, as was mentioned, amplifying Palestinian voices through cultural programming, through cultural programming, through community events, where residents can share their stories and have their voices heard. I mean, I think particularly, yeah, I of course was aware of some of the things that happened in our neighborhood. But other things were not on my radar. And I struggle to imagine that, you know, in today, where we kind of all try to unplug as much as possible at times, that we're as well aware of what's happening to our neighbors. Second, I would want to make sure that we're protecting free speech, right? So that means when people go out to speak out about injustice in Somerville, they should be able to do it without fear and without worry that if there is something that happens, that it won't be looked at, it won't be looked at, it won't be addressed. And I absolutely think we need to have data and we need to be able to report and we need to be able to name and shame. Third, I want to, I think it's important to everyone to, in our community, to try to make sure that they understand anti-Palestinian hate is just one part of our huge fight in, even here in Somerville, against all hate. It's xenophobia, Islamophobia, racism, antisemitism, transphobia, homophobia. We need to make sure that people understand that this is just another vile, disgusting, intolerable act. And if we care about these other things, like we all say we do, and I hope we all truly do, then we have to, have to, have to act.
So I think that as a city councillor, if I were elected, I'd become part of the government. And the government, the city government has a responsibility to keep people safe. That's a basic, fundamental responsibility that we are failing with the Palestinian community. I have more to say about that, but I want to move on to pass that basic responsibility to the kind of community we are in Somerville. And we are, more than not, a community that values diversity and that wants to cultivate a community where people can be themselves and can live out their cultures fully. So we celebrate those things that we have in common and celebrate those things that make us different. And that makes Somerville beautiful. The place where I'm most challenged by this question is that as a, if I were a city government employee on the same payroll as the police, then the natural people we turn to as in the government is to ask police to keep people safe. And I know that that hasn't, it's not how it's felt for many people in this community, that you, I'm sure there's diversity of opinion here, but there are certainly those among the group who don't want the police to be involved at all. And I, we would have to work together. And in some way, I'm not suggesting that we need to work together as a city councillor and as a Palestinian community. I'd like to continue to cultivate that relationship and try to figure out how to maintain safety in a way that works for this community. And I don't have an answer up top of my head beyond that.
First, I want to say how sorry I am that it happened to you and your kids and your family, and that anyone here might be subjected to that. I'm very sorry. I'm hearing often from the people I'm talking with in the community that the RSJ has been ineffective in a lot of ways. And I feel as though a solution may be education or somehow, even with the police, they're not acting, I think, as strongly as they should have. And I think if we somehow, I would make it my goal to reach out to the police and find out why they're not working as well as they should. And maybe it's a matter of getting them to know people from Palestine, getting them to know even just other ethnicities, or just making them more aware of why they need to be more proactive because they're not acting the way they should. They're not as effective as they should be. And I don't, I think that it's a matter of education and maybe even getting Palestinians into the school system.
Our experience with the police is they have been trying to control us and bringing charges against us and using, that's not a solution that this community feels is helpful. One thing that we have been asking for is a non-police emergency response force that could be used to help create a barrier between them and our people, help keep us safe by creating a barrier that doesn't bring criminal charges against us as a result of being present. So I invite candidates to think about that as a solution. And Manita has just a quick follow-up for everyone on this question of anti-Palestinian hate.
I'm a mom to two little kids here. I've lived in Somerville for 17 years. What I wanted to ask you all is, if elected, would you commit to co-hosting a teach-in with Somerville for Palestine on anti-Palestinian hate in Somerville?
Yes, but, and the yes, but is, I feel like I need to know more. Like, it would kind of be like the student teaching the class, maybe. But I would 100% want to be the student, I guess, so that I could help teach the class, or I guess like a teacher assistants or something. I would be happy to do that, yes.
Yes, somewhat similar to John. I would want support to make sure that as host, I am setting the stage and inviting and might not be the person most knowledgeable to be speaking. But I think a teach-in like that would be a very crucial and welcome thing in our city. I think we need, we need as many powerful voices as we can speaking and saying that Palestinian residents of Somerville and Palestinian voices are part of Somerville. I think it's really important to also mention, and not to say that these are equivalent, but that there's been antisemitic violence in our country, some of it tremendously vicious. And that there are many people in our community, Arab, Palestinian, Jewish, some Israeli, Somervilleans, who are experiencing fear as well. And I think many such events would be helpful to bring people together and really try to point out that the safety of each of us is tied to each other.
I mean, I have a master's degree in education. I've helped develop curriculum. I used to teach with John over a decade ago. Ben, you're an educator. You guys educators, especially, yes, there you go, right. So, I mean, if Palestinian education is your litmus test, I mean, you've got a great batch of candidates up here. I would be working with you to kind of help develop that curriculum. And I, how do I say this? In something like that, I would solely focus on Palestine. I think there are other opportunities to talk about other peoples who receive hate. I get that. But this is a forum about Palestine and Palestine specifically is the victim in what's happening right now in Israel and what's happening in Somerville.
Yes, I think this is a great example of a way for, when the community wants to speak up about what they're experiencing and about their identity, and they can partner with the city council or someone in government. That's a beautiful opportunity for something that's coming from the community. So I'd really love to be involved in that. And I hope there's a group of us that are able to do this together.
I agree, absolutely, yes. I think that it doesn't matter if you're Muslim, Jew, Christian, weekend, spaghetti monster believer. It's important, like harassment, hate, hate speech, and then going back to torture and genocide has no place in the world. I don't support anyone who supports that, period. And I think education is important as well.
Thanks, everybody. So we will now move forward to hearing from Ed, who will connect kind of all the dots between what's happening from Somerville to Palestine.
We'll petition. When you get to talk to the people in Somerville, you see the overwhelming support, but you also see the fear in the people of Somerville. Because they either affected by cuts right now or they know it's coming. They know it's coming. You know it's coming, and we all know it's coming. And that's why a lot of people are signing. Because they know that this war in Palestine is one of the reasons that cuts are happening here, to pay for that genocide. So, together with some other union people, in the unions, there's a lot of inertia. And you'll find out in the city council, there's a hell of a lot of inertia. So what we do is we do a, like ordinance or something like that. So I want to read something that we came up with like a few hours ago. Where, as thousands of people in Somerville receive benefits that people fought for and voted for, these benefits are to be cut locally and nationally, such as Section 8, SNAP, Medicare, Medicaid, veterans' benefits, WIC, and shelters. Also, programs that we fund dealing with education, healthcare, housing, environment protection are drastically being cut. These cuts are going directly to the military budget to oppress the Palestinians and other colonies. Whereas Trump is setting up a repressive apparatus to attack any opposition to their wars and evil cuts to human needs. Whereas corporations and finance companies are making billions in profits off the genocide of the Palestinian people, these corporations make up part of the military-industrial complex and are complicit in genocide. Whereas these corporations are violating the Leahy Amendment that prohibits our taxes go into any conflict that violates human rights anywhere in the world. Whereas the military-industrial complex is complicit with the Trump regime to attack the people of Somerville by cutting the programs that we fought for and voted for. Therefore, we demand that the petition voted on by the people of Somerville to boycott and divest from these military-industrial complex corporations, making profit from the genocide of Palestine being enforced, be, being enforced with the vigor of the Somerville City Hall. And that you, as legislative leaders, you will advocate and build a political network with other cities and town legislators to combat these cuts, combat the genocide in Palestine and the repressive machine like ICE by the fascist agenda of Trump.
Ed, is there a question in there?
Will you use this agenda as an ordinance? And will you go with other cities and towns throughout this country to build a network? Also, that's you. We will be doing demonstrations and we'll be doing a lot of other things. We need help from the legislation to do that. We need permits and we need your, whatever you can do to help. Will you do that?
One of the mottos that I have held on to amongst Trump's reelection is the, I can't remember the name, but it's who wrote it, but "do not comply in advance." You know, so that's been something that I've stuck with when I think through things. And so I support every opportunity to stand up to the Trump agenda. And the way we do that locally, I love the idea of networking with other towns. You know, Somerville has been involved in lawsuits against the administration. I support that. And then we also just have to increase, we also have to increase revenue for the city. And one of the ways to do that is to improve our permitting processes, help small businesses so that we have more income and more money flowing into the city. And this is, you know, my pet issue has been the pit in Tills Square. So one of the ways that I stay sane as well, I know that the guy in the White House would love for us to do nothing but think of him all the time. But I sometimes turn away and I look at my neighborhood and I think, what can we do right here to make things better? And so I've been doing that and paying attention to the pit in Tills Square and trying to turn it around. All right.
Yeah, totally agree with the permitting and zoning, but also the bigger question of, Somerville is one city in an ecosystem of cities within Massachusetts. Yeah, we should be absolutely aligned with Medford, Arlington, Cambridge, you name it, right? I've already said that if I'm elected to city council, I will do it full-time. It pays $42,000 a year. Yeah, whatever, I'll do it full-time. I've made less. And a lot of that would be going to the state house at least once a week to coordinate with other legislators and other towns. In addition, we got this incredible AAA bond rating. Okay, well, let's use it, you know? You gotta spend money to make money sometimes. And nothing speaks more in volumes than being a town that can actually have small businesses here. The permitting and zoning here sucks. It sucks. I tried to start a cottage coffee roasting company thing out of my apartment. I gave up and decided to run for office instead because that is easier than trying to do the cottage coffee roasting. Yes. Permitting, all that kind of stuff. We need more money for our businesses, from our businesses so we can keep growing as a city. I think, you know, there's a couple, there's a lot to pull in there. But I guess what I'll say is, you know, when I see, I think, like all of you, clearly you, sir, you know, the Trump and the fascist regime, that was kind of what pulled me. That was what, after years of kind of thinking about politics and about, not politics, of city council. I really only want to do city council. But of years of wanting to do, like thinking, oh, maybe I should do city council. Now is the time. Seeing what's happening at the national level told me that this is what we need to do. And I really came down on this, you know, thinking that when we see Trump and his goons, you know, getting money to walk our streets, getting money to, you know, fund wars, we need to double down on our side and invest in people and make sure that we're, making sure that everything that we love here in terms of how we look out for our neighbors can continue.
Thanks. I appreciate so much of what I've heard in these answers. I think we really need to keep our determination strong as a city to link with other cities that are standing up. One thing that the White House is doing is they're targeting our sanctuary city status and the sanctuary city status of all the other sanctuary cities. And they're really specifically trying to make the most painful decisions possible for us. It's a really craven and cruel move, and I think we can't waver. I think we have to say, we will do whatever it takes to keep every member of our community safe. And that may require getting pretty creative because $106 million has been cut from the Massachusetts State Education Budget. That money gets passed on to localities. It is no longer going to be passed on. And then there's funding, federal funding that they are trying to cut to us and other sanctuary cities that is currently held up in court, but we do not know what's going to happen with that. And it might be something where we need to draw on resources in the city that in the past we've been too prone to inaction to unlock, such as the many community groups who say, we would love to use city land to host events, to welcome people. such as the many community groups who say, "We would love to use city land to host events, to welcome people." We need to be ready to welcome all of the different ways of helping each other that are possible in our city, because it could be that we're facing some real pain.
You had mentioned HR1. The federal funding for much of like SNAP programs is scheduled to stop at the end of October. And that means we are going to need to fill in that gap. And that's terrifying because there's a lot to fill in there. And I think more than just getting a community and partnering with other cities, I think we have to partner with not just, the entire Massachusetts needs to band together as well as the other three states, because they're coming after us and we need to be ready.
Thanks, everybody. So I just kind of want to touch quickly on something that Ed said and that, you know, a lot of this funding, these funding cuts and these issues are so connected to us sending money to Israel to enact all these horrible things onto Palestinians. And all of this is really connected to Palestine. And so when we are here, out here getting signatures, collecting signatures for this ballot question, we are saying, "We don't want our tax dollars going towards this genocide anymore. We want our tax dollars here at home. We want our tax dollars to be taking care of our people and not harming the people of Palestine." And I think I also just want to quickly comment on the fact that, you know, a few folks have said, you know, "Don't waver" on all these things when it comes to like Trump's fascism. "Don't comply ahead of time." I think also, one thing I have really learned from Palestinians in Gaza this year and last year especially, is how steadfast they are in their courage and their commitment to speaking out and to making sure that they're heard. And I encourage all of you as candidates to kind of reflect on that and be courageous and be bold in your advocacy for Palestine, in your advocacy for human rights, for Palestinians, and for everybody locally and abroad. So thank you, everyone, and I'll pass it to Sarah.
With that in mind, the most important thing I have learned from Palestinians over the past two years is courage and speaking truth in the face of oppression and repression and violence. And so with that, I'm going to invite everyone to sing our songs to our city council candidates with the hope that you will carry this with you if elected to represent the voices that you heard here in this room. Courage, my friend.
My friend.
You do not walk alone.
We will.
We will.
Walk with you.
Walk with you.
And sing your spirit home.
Gaza, my friend.
My friend.
You do not walk alone.